We all know we're going live, so we're now on Facebook Live, so we're just letting you all know. It's our two-minute warning. Councilman Anderson, that live feed should be on now.
I'm looking.
Okay.
Do I need to select following?
Probably. But it should just have like a live thing on the page. Councilman College can see it, so I think it, just go to the page and it should pop up.
Okay, it hasn't yet, but I'm looking.
Okay. Who joined?
This is April.
Thank you, April. Rusty, if you go to the Facebook page and you scroll down, it'll say the city of Gochet is live now.
I just sent them a link to it.
Councilman College sent you a link and message.
Okay, I'm still looking.
Underneath where you click following, just scroll down and it'll be there.
Okay, it goes to unfollow default and see first. Hit default is with up.
If you just scroll down, it'll pop up. Okay. Good evening. I'd like to call the Gochet City Council meeting to order tonight, April 19th, 2022 at 6:30 PM. Thank you all for coming. I ask that you please silence your cellphone and all electronic devices. Tonight with our prayer, we have a guest here this evening, Reverend Dr. John Switzer from St. Pierre's Episcopal Church, and we will have him lead us in our prayer, and then afterwards, Councilman Jackson will lead us in the pledge. So please stand.
Heavenly Father, we give you thanks for all of your gifts. We give you thanks for this beautiful day. Thanks for the freedoms that we share. We ask your blessing upon this community and its people, and especially this evening upon those who serve as its leaders. Give them wisdom and give us all a sense of justice and peace and service. We ask this through Christ our Lord.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you Reverend Switzer and thank you Councilman Jackson. That brings us to our agenda order approval. Do we have any changes, Ms. Shancy?
No, sorry, I've said I have to correct correction to page number 289 on the minutes for April 3rd. That would be considered as the I number one.
Okay, thank you. And I would like to add a number one before and let's number all the presentation down and add Supervisor Innit Morris and recognize him from District Two on the presentation agenda.
We'll make him first?
Right, we'll make him first and then two will be presentation of the redistricting and three fishing for trash. Do we have a motion, agenda order approval with changes?
So move.
Motion by Councilman Jackson.
Second.
Second by Councilman College. All in favor? Councilman George? Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to our announcements by our city manager, Ms. Shancy.
The Earth Day celebration of the city of Gochet will be Friday, April 22nd, from 11:00 AM until 6:00 PM at Shepherd's State Park. You can stop by the welcome center for some Earth Day goodies. Tasty Thursday will be April 28th, beginning at 11:00 AM at the Singing River Mall property. The Gochet Mayor Chief Council will host Gochet Game Day to include a kickball tournament, a cornhole tournament, and a color war on Saturday, April the 30th, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Gochet Sports Place and Gochet First United Methodist Church. The National Day of Prayer will be Thursday, May 5th, starting at 12:00 PM at City Hall Council Chambers. The Gochet Farmers Market begins the second Saturday of every month, beginning in May, running through September, starting at 8:00 AM until 12:00 PM at George Martin City Park. American Legion Post 1992 will host a Memorial Day Avenue of Flight Ceremony on May 30th, starting at 11:00 AM at the Veterans Tribute House.
Thank you, Ms. Shancy. That brings us to our presentation agenda, and tonight we have visiting us from across the river, our supervisor, Innit Morris from District Two, and he's also a former alderman in Moss Point, so thank you for coming over, and I will not steal your thunder on the news you can share if people missed it.
I'm here in the city of Gochet, and I'm a former Gochet hater too, because I grew up in Gochet, February 20th, first over the 1970s, so I am an hater too.
All right.
Some people don't know that, so I am a Gochet hater.
Trump.
I just want to thank the boards for inviting me. I've been trying to get here to see them for two months, for four months, and I finally got here to see everybody. Mayor Lawrence said, "You haven't seen them. You've been to Oceans Springs." I said, "I'm passing you, so I've got to get here and see you guys." And anything I can do for District here of Gochet, like Gochet is my home too, yeah. I know College Park and Delta Forest and C-Clip, because I know Churk City long from back in the day when I was a kid, so I know the area good. And I just want to introduce myself. If anybody's needed any help, I'm just one of the people on the board of Jackson County, but I'm here for Gochet.
Thank you Supervisor Morris. Now, do you want to tell them the news, the recent news from Gochet?
Oh, yeah, you could. Gochet, or the hospital board, y'all, the city of Gochet has never had a person to represent Gochet on the hospital board. Last month, we put a new person on the board, her name was Christian Hartley, so she represented Gochet. So that's good news for y'all, sir.
Christian Hartley?
Mm-hmm. Thank you Supervisor Morris. We are blessed to have you on the board to support us over here across the river and all your hard work, and also seeing the need to have somebody on that hospital board to be a voice for Gochet, Mississippi. And Christian Hartley has done a fine job representing us in many capacities and serving on the chamber, and she's dedicated to Gochet, so we look forward to working with all y'all.
Right, and I forgot to mention your former mayor, Ken Taylor. I work with him closely. As I said, I'm a new supervisor. I keep saying, I want to say alderman, but I'm supervisor. So, you know, me and him have worked closely. You know, if you're former mayor and anything you can do for the city of Gochet, we're gonna do it.
Yes, we appreciate y'all working together. Thank you.
I got one comment. I've got one comment. You have some big shoes to fill, and so far you seem to be doing a good job for us.
Thank you. And for our guests and our citizens here, if you don't know, Mr. Morris took, Supervisor Morris took, supervised the Melton Harris spot, and he was a big proponent for Gochet on the board, as so was Supervisor Taylor and all the supervisors. They all are dedicated to helping every city in Gochet, and we're blessed to have a partnership with all of y'all. Okay, that brings us to our presentation agenda number two, presentation regarding redistricting by Tommy Carden with Butler Snow.
Thank you, Mayor Vaughn and members of the council. My name is Tommy Carden, and I'm with the law firm Butler Snow. We actually have an office in Billport, as well as Jackson and Oxford, and so we are, we go from one end of the state to the other in terms of locations and representation. I have with me tonight our demographer, Bill Rigsby. Bill works with us on all of our redistricting efforts. He is the map guy. He's the guy who actually draws the lines. Now, y'all will tell him where to put the line, but he's the one that actually has the computer software and works with that and comes up with all the colorful maps. So Bill and I will be the team that will be working with you. There is another lawyer in our firm. His name is Parker Berry. Parker may from time to time be involved as well. We work interchangeably and just depending on what schedules look like and those kinds of things. So don't be surprised if you see him, but probably it's gonna be me most of the time in terms of starting out with you and walking you through the process. What I want to do tonight is I want to go over two broad topics with you. First of all, I want to talk to you about the process itself and just give you a brief overview of what that's gonna look like. And then secondly, I want to talk to you about the numbers, the census numbers that I have shared with you, that I passed out. You should have a table before you, but we'll just go through that and try to give you an overview of that. First of all, with regard to the process, how is this actually gonna work? How long is it gonna take? What's it gonna look like? We will start by tonight by giving you an overview of what's in store, and then tomorrow, we will conduct individual interviews with each one of you. That's what we like to start out by doing, is conducting an individual interview with each one of you separately, so that you can talk to us about the characteristics of the ward you represent, so that you can help us understand the different characteristics of the ward that you're in, and maybe share a little history and talk to us about current situations in terms of your existing wards. After we receive that individual input from you, you'll meet with me and Bill, and we will go through things with you. After we receive that, then we try to see if we can collectively come up with some type of composite draft of a map that may or may not work. And it may be more than one draft, because many times in redistricting, there's more than one map that works, and it's just a matter of which map ends up being the one that you prefer in terms of actually adopting. That process, once we will try to come up with a draft that we think are drafts that we think may work, we'll probably want to present that to you either in a work session or in one of your regular meetings, get your further input on that, and then we will want to schedule a public hearing. We think it's very important to afford the public an opportunity to provide input into the process, but it's also helpful to have some kind of draft map for them to look at, so that we can receive input, meaningful input from members of the public. After that is done, then we should be in a position to consider adopting a map. And again, it may be a single map that ends up reaching consensus and that's what you end up with, or it may be a couple of drafts that you can sue in terms of what you end up voting on. This process will take, it'll probably take anywhere from four to six months as a whole. It may not take, it may not take six months. It just depends on, depends on how quickly we can come to consensus on something in terms of what options may be out there. One other fact that I failed to mention that would be part of the process too, we'll recommend to you redistricting principles for you to adopt after we've had our individual interviews with you, and those are just general guidelines that you will adopt that we will try to follow in terms of drawing them out and drawing them out live. So the process will kick off really tonight and tomorrow in terms of the input. Then we will, after we visit with each one of you tomorrow, then we will work and see what type of, Bill primarily will work and see what kind of map he can come up with, and that process, that'll probably take several weeks to work through that, and then we will follow back up with you appropriately as we go along. So that's kind of what the process is gonna look like and what will be involved. Do any of you have a question about the process? All right, let's talk then about the numbers, the stuff that everybody's really interested in. And that's the chart that's before you. What we've done, y'all, is that we've taken the 2020 census numbers, the official data that's presented by the Census Bureau, and we've taken your existing ward lines, and we've pumped those 2020 census numbers into your existing ward lines. That is what's called the benchmark plan. In other words, that's your starting point. You start from whatever your existing ward lines are with the current census numbers pumped into that, and then you draw from that. And so the numbers that are before you are, the numbers for the benchmark plan. And the way you determine whether or not you need to actually redistrict is you look at the ideal size of the district, and in your case here, the ideal size is just a little over 1,300 people. And you look at each ward and you see how much over that ideal the population is and how much under that ideal the population is. And the way to determine whether you have to redistrict is you add the most overpopulated district, the variation percentage, which is gonna be in this far left corner, the corner of the column, it's entitled variance. You take the most overpopulated, which in your case is Ward One, at 18.14%.
Tommy, can you hold on? Councilman George and Anderson, I text y'all a photo so y'all would know what he's going over. Just say.
I repeat.
Okay, just wanted them to know.
Thank you for doing that, Mayor. That is helpful.
Well, I just want them to be able to understand what you're saying.
Going back to that column on the far left, the column that's entitled variance, you'll see the most overpopulated ward is Ward One. It's 18.14% over, or 691 people, too many. And the most underpopulated ward is Ward Two, at 8.62%. And when you add those two, you add the most overpopulated, the most underpopulated, and you get what's called an overall maximum deviation. Some people call it an overall variance. That number is what's in the very bottom, that total variance number. It's 26.75, technically maybe 26.76, but you get the point. So if that number is over 10%, then you're required to redistrict. So you are qualified. It's well over the 10%, and so we do need to redraw the ward lines as a result. And what happens here, y'all, is that in this particular case, as you can see, Ward One is going to need to give up people. It's gonna need to lose people. Wards Two and Three need to gain people, because both Wards Two and Three are underpopulated, as you can see, and so we're gonna need to add people to Wards Two and Three. Four and Five, you know, if we could just keep them exactly like they are, you're fine, but that's kind of hard to do when you start tweaking other ones. Yeah, that's right, all of them call that. Yeah, you just, you just kind of get, if you tweak one district, one ward line, and generally it's gonna affect several others. And so you just have to kind of, you just kind of have to go through that balancing act as we go through that process. But those are the things we'll be looking at. The main legal principles we need to make sure we follow, number one, one person, one vote, which is the population figures that I just shared with you. That's the ideal district size, trying to get that. What you want, y'all, is in that variance column, you want each one of the wards to be under 5% overall deviation. So you want to get each one of those numbers in that variance column under 5, and if we do that, that gets our overall maximum deviation under 10%, which is good. Okay? The second legal principle that we've got to make sure we follow is Section Two of the Voting Rights Act. Section Two of the Voting Rights Act, Allemes, defines when majority minority districts have to be drawn, and we will certainly make sure we adhere to that. Ward Two is your majority minority district currently, and we will certainly need to pay particular attention to that and make sure we are following all the appropriate laws dealing with that. Let me mention to you all, there has been a significant change in the law in the Voting Rights Act over this last 10-year period, and that is that Section Five of the Voting Rights Act no longer applies. Several years ago, the United States Supreme Court handed down a decision that rendered Section Four of the Voting Rights Act inoperable, which made Section Five inoperable. And Section Five was the law that said you had to get pre-clearance, or approval from the Justice Department on any voting change that you made. So historically, your redistricting in the city would have had to be approved by the Justice Department after you redrew your lines. That's not the case this time around. We do not have to get pre-clearance, so once you adopt a plan and publish that plan in the newspaper according to the statute, then it becomes official, and that plan is in place. So that is, that's a big difference. For those of you who may have gone through this before, that's a big difference from what we've done in the past. And so, and if you follow this area of law at all, you'll see in the newspapers, you know, from time to time, you hear about your Supreme Court cases and things that are going on. There's still opportunities that the law may change some more over the next year or so. But that's what we're here for, is to advise you on that. If it does. But that's what we're here for, is to advise you on that if it does, and to follow that process along the way. So that's kind of the overview of the numbers. Do any of you have any questions about the census data, the numbers, or any of the issues that I've talked about there?
Councilman George?
I'm gonna save mine until tomorrow.
Councilman George, you have anything?
No, do not at all make sense.
Councilman Anderson, you have anything?
Nothing, Mike. I'll discuss it with him in the morning. I do have to talk with him on the phone though, because I'm 600 miles away.
Okay.
And we got your number, Councilman, so we're going to give you a call first thing in the morning.
Councilman Jackson?
Yeah, you said about the five. What, so if there's nobody else that is paying attention to how we did redistricting, how can, how are we assuring that the districting is fairly done?
Well, we're going to be advising you in terms of the legal principles, and our advice to you is, you know, to make sure that you're following the legal principles that you need to follow. In terms of the political issues and things of that nature, I mean, that's going to be up y'all as to how you make decisions along those lines. But we're going to advise you on those legal parameters to make sure you stay within the bounds you need to stay legally, and then the things that are within your discretion, we leave to your discretion.
Okay. And you spoke upon the majority, I mean, majority-minority rule, being that you spoke on my ward. What, are you going to explain to us the laws that will, to make, to assure us that we're not in violation of the laws of the majority-minority ruled areas?
Yes, sir, Councilman Jackson. That's Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act. And Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act, it's a, it's kind of a three-pronged analysis that you have to go through. First of all, you look to see whether there's 50% plus of a minority population that is in a reasonably compact area. If you determine that that exists, and secondly, you have to look and see whether there's racially polarized voting. And then the third thing, you have to look and see whether or not there's block voting by the majority voters in that area. You go through that analysis and then you get to the end and you look at something called the totality of the circumstances, which are about 13 different factors that the city passed many, many years ago. This is all coming from a case back in 1982. And that's the governing law right now in terms of Section 2, and that's what we will be advising all of you on in terms of compliance.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Councilman Gillette, you have any? No. Councilman Combs?
Good day.
Councilman Eldon?
Good call.
Okay. Thank you, Tommy, for y'all coming down, and we look forward to seeing y'all tomorrow. Individually meetings.
Individually.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Okay, that brings us to our next presentation agenda item, and that will be fishing for trash presentation. Do we have anybody here for that? They have not made it. If they come in, we'll let them present it later. We'll go to our business agenda item. One authorization to enter into a professional services agreement with Seymour Engineering for work associated with the Gochet Head Start Storm Drain Pipe Project. Go ahead, Ms. Shantsey.
So I was approached by the county about a year ago regarding a drainage issue in between the Gochet Head Start and the Presbyterian Church and the Buxton Highway 90, all the way up Old Spanish Trail. And in working with the county, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mark has already designed what needs to be done, but that prong is complete. That design has been sent to the county, they made comments, Mark tweaked it in accordance with what the county thought. And so what we've come up with on design is the existing storm drain pipe between U.S. Highway 90 and Old Spanish Trail. It's deteriorating and the sink wells are visible, you can see it. The north end ditch tie-in is experiencing turbidity during rain events and it's causing erosion to the land right next to it. So the project would construct a concrete structure adjacent to the Head Start facility. It will install new drainage pipes, rip route, and extend the north end outfall approximately 30 linear feet to the north with a new head wall to alleviate the turbidity and erosion. The south outfall would be a concrete catch basin and culvert that extend under Old Spanish Trail. So once the county reviewed the design, they sent back an email that said, if y'all will pay for the engineering, we will pay for the actual construction of the project. So the contract you have in front of you is for creating, it's already designed, is for creating a bid package, going out for bids, and doing the RPR on the project. Did I get all that right? So...
Well, it's not fully engineered. We've got preliminary engineering, but he's got to still do some additional plans and detail sheets and stuff like that, but it's close. I'd say you're probably about 85% complete.
Yeah, there's most of the specs and details that need to be cleaned up, but the county has signed off on the drawings.
So in any event, the cost for the engineering portion that the county asked us to pay is $54,900. So this is basically a contract to hire Seymour Engineering to perform that work. And then the county has informed me that they will use GOMESA funds to pay for the actual construction of this by contractor. So...
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Shantsey. Do we have any citizen comments? Any public comments? None? That brings us to a motion. Do we have a motion to authorize to enter into a professional services agreement with Seymour Engineering for the work associated with the Gochet Head Start Storm Drain Pipe Project in the amount not to exceed $54,900? So moved. We got a motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gillette. Any discussion, starting with Councilman George?
No comment.
Councilman, thank you. Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman Gillette?
Mark, what's the projected time for doing this project? You got any?
For the actual construction?
Yes.
Well, we're figuring 120 to 150 days. The box that we have to build on the south side before we cross the Spanish Trail, it's a pretty, pretty sporty box with a lot of work that they have to do on it. So I'd say 150 days.
Without looking at the design, is this box going to be, you can go under Old Spanish Trail?
No, it's going to be just north of Old Spanish Trail, but we are going to replace the existing culvert. It's not large enough, so we're going to take that pipe out and put in a proper, proper...
A larger pipe?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that box on the north side is going to have to be a conflict box, so it's got drain basin, it's going to be coming from, new drain pipes coming in on the north and the south. Then there's an outfall from the detention pond from the Head Start that's tied into, and then additionally, there's a water main that's going to look through it. So it's going to be all cast in place.
Yeah. Anything else, Councilman Gillette? That's it. Councilman College?
I think this will be a great benefit to that area to improve the drainage. Improve the drainage and improve the issues that we've been having at that time. So thank you, Mark, for your due diligence on this.
Thank you. Councilman Anderson?
Oh, yes. Is this, when it goes across Old Spanish Trail, is this drainage just leading into the head of that little marshy bayou area in the, up here, bayou, I guess you'd call it?
Yes, it is.
Is that, is that be draining into a body of water, or will it be sifting through the marsh area before it gets to the bayou?
It's north of Old Spanish Trail, so it'll be dumping into that marshy area.
Okay, but what I'm wondering is, does the bayou actually come into that, that far? Are we, is, will it be draining right into the bayou, the water, into a depth of water, or will it be sifting through the marsh before it gets to the bayou?
Yeah, there's an existing ditch that goes out to the bayou, but it's also going to filter right through the marsh perhaps.
Did you hear, Councilman Anderson?
Okay, I just wanted to make sure of what, you want to do any kind of sediment filled into the bayou itself at that point?
No, it's got a sediment buffer between them.
Yeah, and this should really help the sediment going into the bayou.
Yeah. Is that all, Councilman Anderson?
That's all, thank you.
You're welcome. Councilman Eldon?
No comment.
I just want to thank all of you for working with the county and Supervisor Taylor for, you know, really following up with the Head Start. If you've been by this project, you'll see their playground is falling in due to this. It's a major safety hazard, so I appreciate all y'all's hard work to get it rectified but done properly, and the drainage in that area is poor already. So we thank you, Supervisor Morris. If you can relate to the board, we appreciate it.
Mayor Boone?
Uh-huh.
May I make one more statement?
Yeah, go ahead.
One of the reasons I was asking for this, I've seen some, some projects in Pasca Gula where the ditches are and where the water flows into them, from instances like this, and they've actually put a trap in them that will collect any kind of trash or stuff that gets into the storm drain system. And when it comes out to that point, it won't be filling the marsh with trash. I've seen a, sorry, you know what a turtle excluder device is on a shrimp net?
Yes.
This is similar device that they put at the outflow of that thing that will collect heavy pieces of trash and stuff to keep it from filling the marsh up with trash from the storm drain system. That's, that was my interest in something like that, if that's a possibility that could happen.
Mr. Seymour said he'll be glad to look into that for you, Councilman Anderson.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments? We have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman Gillette. All in favor? Councilman George?
Aye.
Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number two. Consider a request for a 25-foot variance to assigned height requirements and approximately 68 square foot variance to assigned square footage requirements in the C-3 Highway Commercial Zoning District, GPC number 22-03-VAR, by Planning Director Scott Ankersen.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. The Planning Department has received this request from Kenneth Morris, doing business as Tousys on the Highway, for a 25-foot variance to assigned height requirements and approximately 68 square foot variance to assigned square footage requirements in C-3 Highway Commercial Zoning District, 910 Highway 90. Parcel ID number 1831570.000. The application fee of $175 was paid on January 12, 2022, and all public notice departments have been met. So that said, a request property is zoned to C-3 Highway Commercial. The applicant would like his freestanding sign to be 35 foot in height in lieu of the 10-foot maximum height allowed by the UDO. He would also like the sign to be approximately 140 square feet in size in lieu of the maximum 72 square foot allowed by the U5 Belt and Leagues in that location. I've included in your memorandum the UDO's definition for variance and the UDO's definition for hardship as described in the Section 4 of the U5 Belt and Leagues. Also included the criteria for approval in Section 4.18.4 for variance and what the variance application shall demonstrate. The recommendation from the Planning Commission is that the Planning Commission recommends approval of the variances based on the evidence and the record that all criteria have been met. The City Council may approve the variance request as presented, approve the variance request with changes, or deny the variance request. I've included your, the complete packet, minutes, minutes, etc., from the 4722 meeting, and also the applicant is here tonight to answer any questions he may have.
Thank you, Mr. Ankersen. Do we have any public comments? Any public comments? No public comments? Do we have a motion to, for a consider a request for 25-foot variance to assigned height requirement and approximately 68 square foot variance to assigned square footage requirement, C-3 Highway Commercial Zoning District, 910 Highway 98?
I'd like to ask a couple of questions prior to the motion, just in case we don't have to do a motion and amendment to the motion and all that stuff. Can we do that?
We normally have a motion, but go...
Yeah, but I hate to do the motion and then we have to do an amendment to the motion and it gets into something. So we get this, if we can do this first thing, can we do this legally?
Yes, sir.
The motion? Just, Mr. Morris, I know you're here, and just a couple of questions that I have regarding conversations during the Planning Commission meeting. Is it your intent that this sign will not actually project higher than the current canopy that you have at your facility?
Yeah, they use that big word, "groul" on me, and that means it's going to be the same height as the canopy is.
Okay, and in here, it sounds like your canopy...
It'll look a little better.
Yeah, and from your conversation, it sounds like the canopy is at 30 foot, so the sign instead of 35 foot will be 30 foot. Is that correct? So what would that variance actually work out to be if we went to 30 foot instead of 35 foot?
I'm sorry, would you ask me that then?
No, Scott's crunching numbers real quick, I think.
It would be a 20-foot variance.
It'd be a 20-foot variance, instead of a 25 foot is what we're saying. Okay.
I do think of the Planning Commission, all this is still smaller and lower than the others that we have throughout Highway 90.
There are some colors that need to be revised.
Right. That's what I was...
That's all I have.
Okay. Do we have a motion to consider a request for the 25-foot variance to assigned height requirements and an approximately 68 square foot variance to assigned square footage requirements in the C-3 Highway Commercial Zoning District at 910 Highway 98, Gochet, Mississippi, GPC number 22-03-VAR, PIB number 81831570.000.
So moved.
We got a motion by Councilman Gillette.
Second.
And a second by Councilman College. Any discussion with number, with Councilman George?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman Gillette?
I just have a quick, and I think it's a good-looking sign. I like it. But if we continue to do variances on signs, shouldn't we be looking at the ordinance for what's going on Highway 90 and maybe do something about changing it? Every time we go through, you know, we're doing a variance on what the ordinance says. So I think we should be looking at it, and that has nothing to do with, you know, with approval of this one. I just, we'd like a request that you do that.
I agree. And we actually did make an amendment, maybe two years ago, to add square footage to corridor overlay district.
Right.
Most of these businesses on Highway 90, we followed then. We added a certain percentage if the business built in the corridor overlay district. So we have been steadily looking at amending sign ordinance, and we can absolutely take another look at it if y'all direct us to do so.
Well, you continually seeing people asking for variances to the ordinance, so something ought to be done with the ordinance. That's, that's all.
Thank you, Councilman Gillette. Councilman College?
I just, I'd like it just to be in the mood, the minutes that the applicant stated, and I agree that the congruence with the height of the sign in relation to the canopy of the facility.
Okay. Councilman Anderson?
I'm in agreement, and I think the sign is signed, like next door, the sign, pretty much the same, so, and across the street, so I'm good with it.
Thank you, Councilman Anderson. Councilman Eldon?
No comment.
Okay. All in favor? Councilman George? Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Morris, and that is the mighty nice gas station and all the pumps work and print receipts, so we appreciate the cleanliness. Okay, that brings us to business...
Thank you, Mayor, and the City Council, the City... Thank you, Mayor, and the city council, City of Gochee.
Thank you, Mr. Boris. Number, business agenda item number three, consideration of a conditional use major permit that would allow a church in a C-2 Community Commercial Zoning District and approval for a 6,550 square foot expansion to the existing church, GPC number 22-07-CU, by Planning Director Mr. Scott Anderson.
Yes, sir, Mayor, thank you. The planning department has received this request from St. Pierre's Episcopal Church for a conditional use major that would allow a church in the C-2 Community Commercial Zoning District. They are also requesting approval for a 6,550 square foot expansion to the existing church. The church is located at 4412 Gochee Van Cleve Road, parcel ID number 82426520.000. The application fee of $250 was paid on February 24, 2022. All public notice requirements have been met. Some background on the property, as said, it is zoned C-2 Community Commercial. It, uh, the general features of the proposed project, total acreage is approximately seven acres. The, um, existing land use, of course, is an existing church. The comprehensive plan's future land use designation calls low pack commercial for this area. So as y'all know, this church has been there, its grandfather, if they weren't asking for the expansion, they could just remain in the grandfather status. But because they're asking for the expansion, the UDO requires a conditional use for a church in any district, so they're just trying to get legal with the conditional use status in order for them to be able to do the expansion. Uh, the, I've included the review criteria for major conditional use is outlined in 4.17.5 of the U5 development ordinance, along with the applicant's responses to these and the staff's findings. I've also included the definition of conditional use, and will remind council that a conditional use once issued does run with the land, so if the property change, changes ownership for any reason, it's always tagged with the land, so it remains, uh, that it can be a church. Um, recommendation, the planning commission recommends that city council approve the conditional use major based on the evidence and the record that all criteria have been met. Therefore, city council may approve the conditional use major, approve the conditional use major with changes, or deny the conditional use major. I've included once again the complete packet and the excerpt from the meeting, uh, dated 4722, and also the applicant is here tonight once again to answer any questions you may have for them.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Do we have any public comments? Go ahead, and as far, come to the front and state your name, address, and you have three minutes to speak.
My name is Tommy Dale Farr. My address is 7412 Riverview Street in Gochee. I'm the senior warden at St. Pierre's Church. First of all, thank you to the planning commission for bringing our request forward. Most of you know that St. Pierre's was Gochee's first church, and it's 100 years old this past year. And we were not only the first Episcopal church, we were the first church in this community. And as such, we were the church where other congregations met, the Methodist, the Presbyterians, the Baptist, everybody met at St. Pierre's, and we just shared service times. And then our little church eventually went away on the bayou as a result of all those storms. And in 1993, the first service was held over here on the property on Gochee Van Cleve Road, which was deeded to us by the Rouse family. And, uh, it's a gorgeous piece of property. We're very proud of it. We had a few problems, one of which it's real swampy. And our first plan was to build our parish hall right next door to our church, and it would require as much money in dirt as it was going to require us to build the building. So we went to Plan B, and Plan B was to put the parish hall directly behind the church and eventually replace the building that is standing there. That is still our plan. However, money, interest rates have gone up, material costs have exploded, and our plan will now cost us about a quarter or a third as much more as it would have cost us in the first place. So we are kind of in a holding pattern, which is why we have asked for, uh, to be able to put this building, uh, on that site in the hopes that in about six years or so, we have the money and things level out a little bit, and we can put our more beautiful, uh, building there to once again serve the community. Because I will tell you, when we have, even for our congregation right now, if everybody shows up and we have to meet in our parish hall, we can't do it. Casey was there for our celebration, and we were crowded, and there were no tables. Everyone was standing so that we would have room. We are so happy that we have a church that is growing in a time when churches are not. And even if you drive around Gochee on a Sunday morning, you'll notice that there are a lot of quiet churches. So we, we need our building. We want you to come to our building, and we want you to come walk our beautiful prayer walk in the back of that property. You're free to come anytime, bring your dogs, bring your cats, bring your wife, and use our property because we are Gochee's first church.
Thank you, Ms. Farr. Any other citizen comments? Okay. That brings us to, we have a motion to approve, um, consideration of a conditional use major permit that would allow a church in a C-2 Community Commercial Zoning District and approval for a 6,550 square foot expansion to the existing church at 4412 Gochee Van Cleve Road, Gochee, Mississippi, GPC number 22-07-CU, PID number 82426520.000.
I'll make a motion that we approve, uh, planning commission's recommendation and approve the conditional use major permit.
Thank you. Got a motion by, um, Councilman College, a second by Councilman Albin? Any discussion, starting with Councilman George?
Uh, no comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman Gilat?
No comment. Keep growing.
Councilman College?
No comments.
Councilman Anderson?
No comment.
Councilman Albin?
No comment.
I just wanna, um, St. Pierre's, as you heard, has a lot of history, and they have served this, um, community a lot. A lot of nonprofits, we don't have meeting space, and they don't have it on their own building. And who was there, St. Pierre's? They opened their church, church to multiple places, and they have outgrown, and it was standing room only and outside and everywhere else. So they do need, um, more facility, but thank you all for what y'all do in our community, and we're blessed to have all of you. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Councilman George? Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to business item agenda number four. Consideration of a special exception that would allow a mobile such manufactured building to be used as a church fellowship hall in a C-2 Community Commercial Zoning District, GPC case number
Thank you, Mayor. The planning department has received a request from St. Pierre's Episcopal Church for a special exception that would allow a mobile manufactured building to be brought in and used as a church fellowship hall in a C-2 Community Commercial Zoning District at 4412 Gochee Van Cleve Road, parcel ID number 82426520.000. The application fee of $250 was paid on February 24, 2022, and all public notice requirements have been met. So we're talking about the same property. This is just part two of what they're asking to do. Um, in order to be able to bring in this mobile building, it does require a special exception, approval for special exception. Um, once again, I have included the review criteria for special exceptions outlined in 4.16.4 of the UDO. I've included the applicant's responses and staff findings to those. Um, so I will say that special exceptions are not permitted by right. They only be granted when certain criteria are established. Special exceptions do not run with the land, unlike conditional uses, and may be revoked by the planning department if any of the, if any of the following circumstances were discovered: the property changes ownership, the property is being utilized in a manner not permitted under zoning regulations, a special exception, or the property ceases to be used for the purpose allowed in special exception for a period of 180 days during the existence of a special exception. I've also included the UDO's definition of hardship for your review. The planning commission recommends that city council approve the special exception for a period of seven years beginning from the time of installation of the building due to the fact that it meets all the relevant criteria of the UDO. The city, the city council may approve the special exception, approve the special exception with changes or not a special exception. And again, I've included the excerpt and the complete packet, the four pack maps, and here again, the applicant can answer any questions you may have for them.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Do we have any citizen comments? No citizen comments. Do we have a motion of a special exception that would allow a mobile manufactured building to be used as a church fellowship hall in a C-2 Community Commercial Zoning District located at 4412 Gochee Van Cleve Road, Gochee, Mississippi, PID number 82426520.000, GPC case number 22-08-SE.
I'll make a motion that we approve planning commission's recommendation, uh, approve the special exception with the stipulations for a period of seven years beginning from the time of installation of the building.
We, we have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman Albin. Any discussion, starting with Councilman George?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes, um, I see it had mobile manufactured buildings. Is this a commercial part, or is this a regular, like, mobile, um, property, I mean, building?
I actually haven't seen, I haven't seen the actual renderings of the building, but the applicant's-
It's a, it's a high-end purpose-built classroom. It was, uh, used for, uh, younger kids' classroom.
That's basically a commercial part, am I correct?
It has a metal roof, metal sign. It's, uh, it's very well made. It's, uh, it's in 2016. It was used for classrooms. It's in light new condition. It's very well made. It's not a modular, it is a mobile classroom.
Anything else, Councilman Jackson? There be all. Councilman Gilat?
Explain to me why seven years?
I'm really not sure. I think they, they conversed with the applicant about timeline, and they kind of came to a general consensus that seven years. They, I think they were concerned that he left there, you know, and definitely they changed their mind, so they wanted to put some sort of timeline on it, and that's what they came up with after conversing with the applicant.
Do y'all plan on, after seven years, doing something else, or?
Yes, we do.
Okay, alright.
We absolutely do.
That's fine. That's good enough answer.
We planned on doing this, uh, you know, our real building in three years.
I think talking to my, my planning commissioner, because I asked him a question, it sounds like they're using this on a temporary basis while they construct the expansion, while they, they're going in construction, and they figure with the timeframe on construction cost and how much seven years would be good, and if it extended beyond that, they can come and flip, try to play the commission and council again for an extension.
We'll come to Plan D then.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman, Councilman College?
No comments.
Councilman Anderson?
No comment.
Councilman Albin?
No comment.
All in favor? Councilman George? Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Once again, thank you all, St. Pierre's, for y'all's dedication. Good luck, and- Okay, that brings us to business agenda item number five. Consider a request for a special exception that would allow occupancy of an existing single-family dwelling located in a C-2 Community Commercial Zoning District at 3329 Old Spanish Trail, GPC number 22-09-SE. By Planning Director, Mr. Scott Anderson.
Yes, sir, Mayor. Last one for me tonight. The planning department has received a request from Louis Malvinado for a special exception that would allow occupancy of existing single-family dwelling located in a C-2 Community Commercial Zoning District at 3329 Old Spanish Trail, parcel ID number 82435210.000. The application fee of $250 was paid on March 2, 2022. All public notice requirements have been met. The, uh, request property, as said, is zoned C-2. Some general features of the proposed site is approximately 0.88 acres. It has an existing house on the property with public water and wastewater services available from the city. The surrounding zoning is C-2 Community Commercial. The surrounding existing land use is single-family residential and vacant uses to the east and single-family residential to the west and south. The comprehensive plan's future land use designation calls for high-impact commercial in this area. So as you know, this area, most of you know, or probably know that this area was rezoned back in around the 2010 to 2012 timeframe. Many of these, this area was a, was a R1 district or residential district at that time. So there are many single-family dwellings scattered, uh, down this, this particular area of Old Spanish Trail. So this home, once it was rezoned, as long as it stayed occupied, it remains a grandfather structure. It has lost its grandfather status because it didn't become vacant for excessive 180 days. Uh, the applicant is simply asking to turn it back, get the power turned back on so it can be occupied as a single-family dwelling once again. So the following addresses, the, the review criteria for special exception and discussion areas I've included from section 4.16.4 of the UDO, I've included the applicant's responses and staff findings. Uh, and I will remind you that the special exception doesn't run with the land, and it can be revoked if the property changes ownership, the property is being used in a manner that's not permitted by the special exception, or if the property ceases to be used for the, uh, allowed use of the special exception for a period of 180 days during the existence of the special exception. I've also included the definition hardship for you for your review. The planning commission recommends that city council approve the special exception as presented due to the fact that it meets the criteria for approval required by the UDO. City council may approve the special exception, approve the special exception with changes, or deny the special exception. Again, I've included the excerpt from the meeting, 4722, the complete packet belongs to the four pack maps, and the applicant is, the applicant-
Yeah, he's- Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Do we have any citizen comments? No citizen comments? Do we have a motion to approve a special exception that would allow occupancy of an existing single-family dwelling in a C-2 Community Commercial Zoning District located at 3329 Old Spanish Trail, Gochee, Mississippi, PID number 82435210.000, GPC case number 22-09-SE?
I'll make a motion that we approve planning commission's recommendation and approve the special exception.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman Jackson. Any discussion, starting with Councilman George?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes. So, um, being that this is, had this house been ever used for anything commercial?
No.
To my knowledge, no.
So why is it that we pulling it up as if it's commercial, if it's never been used for anything commercial, and even though it lost its time of occupancy, why would it be considered anything else but residential?
Councilman, because the area was rezoned to a C-2 commercial, as said, in the 2010 to 2012 timeframe. I think the, when the comprehensive plan was being drawn up, and they went through, and they designated these areas for future land use, what they thought the area would grow into. And I, I believe that this area just hasn't grown into what, what they considered at the time would be, moved into a commercial type, you know, status for that area. It's really remained residential. There's no proof, uh, to me that it's grown in, uh, forward in any way in a, in a, I mean, in a commercial.
Cause that, that needs to change. The reason why I'm saying is because now they waiting at, uh, at a city council meeting to get approved so that they can get the lights on. You know, that, that shouldn't happen. Um, and this is a, we know this is a house. We know this residential. There's just no argument about it. And yet, we holding people up for putting, cutting the lights on based off, they gotta come to a city council meeting, wait on the meeting, just to decide whether they can cut the lights on or not.
Um, and I, I understand, Councilman Jackson, but just so you know, the house was, um, for sale. It was vacant because it was for sale, and they had it listed as commercial.
Oh, okay.
Um, and then they had a potential buyer who's here tonight that wanted it residential, so the realtor did reach out and asked, could they turn it back, and I sent him to the planning commission.
Alright. Yeah, the only reason why we're going through this is because it was empty for 108, the power was cut off for 108 days, which actually used to be 90 days initially, and we changed that, I think, last administration, or two administrations ago, which is 180 days now.
two administrations ago, where it's a hundred and eighty days now.
Just, I've only to, uh, just know it was for sale. It wasn't.
Okay. Alright, no further comment.
Councilman Delott?
No comment.
Councilman College?
No comment.
Councilman Anderson?
No comment.
Councilman Alvin?
No comment.
And I just, once again, want to thank Scott and all for working and with the realtors and the buyer to make this transition as smooth as possible so it could continue to be a cute little residential house there on Old Spanish Trail. Okay, so do we have a motion for a special exception that would allow, we have a motion, a second, all in favor? Motion carries. Um, Councilman George?
Uh.
Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries now. That brings us to business agenda item number six, approval of the docket of claims by our city clerk, Ms. Montgomery. They've been provided to, um, us by electronic and also published on the city website for review. Um, do we have any citi-, um, public comments on the docket of claims? None? Do we have a motion to approve docket of claims?
I'll make a motion. We approve the docket of claims provided that all entries there on are true, correct, properly entered, and not fraudulent.
We have a motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Delott. Any discussion, starting with Ward one, Councilman George?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
Uh, no comment.
Councilman Delott?
No comment.
Councilman College?
No comment.
Councilman Anderson?
No comment.
Councilman Alvin?
No comment.
All in favor? Councilman George?
Uh.
Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to consent agenda. All items will be approved in one motion unless somebody would like to pull one. Um.
I'll take the poll number seven for further discussion.
Anybody want to pull any other one? Okay. So the consent would be approval of one through six. One would be approval of minutes from regular council meeting held April the fifth, twenty twenty-two with the changes. Correction, number two, receive February twenty-twenty-two finance reports. Three, authorization to accept a monetary donation from State Farm Insurance for the city of Goche's mayor's youth council. Four, resolution requesting and accepting assistance from Jackson County for the replacement of a deteriorated storm drain pipe between U.S. Highway ninety and Old Spanish Trail. Uh, five, approval of an agreement between the city of Goche and Cruisin' the Coasting to host a one-day Cruisin' Through the Decades event. And six, authorization for fees to be waived for the use of barricades to be utilized by Goche Pride for an organizational celebration at Azteca's Restaurant. We have a motion?
So move.
Motion by Councilman Delott. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman College. All in favor? Councilman George?
Uh.
Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to consent agenda item number seven, authorization requested to purchase a nineteen ninety Haresco M nine-two-three A two truck in the amount of ten dollars from the city of Pascoless Fire Department.
I just, didn't we purchase something from the county like six months ago, a high-water vehicle?
The police.
The police department. Okay. And this would be for our fire department?
Yes, sir.
So, I guess. Do we have the, do we have the capabilities to maintain both of these? I just want to make sure because I just, send you a plus up. Okay, that's what I was just wondering on, is this, figured the use of two high-water vehicles?
Well, sometimes it's high water, and I can't travel through roads in the northern part of the city, and then we have.
Well, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't the same vehicle, and the one that we had before fell through some reason or another and, and, it's a different vehicle. Okay. So that's the only questions I had, so.
Make a motion.
So I'll make a motion that we authorize, uh, request to purchase the nineteen ninety Haresco M ninety-two thirty-two A two truck in the amount of ten dollars from the city of Pascoless Fire Department.
We have a motion by Councilman College. Do we have a second?
So move.
Second by Councilman Delott. All in favor? Councilman George?
Uh.
Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to our study agenda, discuss citizen comments. You have three minutes to speak. You come to the podium, state your name, first and last name, and your address. No citizen comments. That brings us to our council comments. It's our second, um, meeting of the month, and we'll start with Ward five, Councilman Alvin.
Uh, no comments.
Okay. Councilman Anderson?
No comment.
Enjoy your visit with your family, Councilman Anderson. Council, um, Councilman College?
Uh, I just have, well, one comment, well, two comments, actually. Unfortunately, I missed the campout, uh, last weekend. Was it last weekend?
Yeah.
Uh, at Shepherd State Park, but I understand it was a fantastic turnout, and I want to thank our recreation department for putting it on. Uh, item number two is Clearwater. We have some drainage issue right across from Rosemont or Martin Bluff Road. It's the two manufactured homes, uh, the west side of Martin Bluff Road across from Rosemont. It is just holding a whole lot of water running back into the property. We could look into, uh, making some adjustments there. It's never really done it to that extent before, so there's something clogged somewhere. On that, I have no other comments.
Thank you, Councilman, um, College. Councilman Delott?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes, um, I have, just as a reminder, this is the Clearwater. I'll just remember about West Park, the drainage, remember the drainage we spoke about, and the sign that was knocked over in De La Forest, uh, the block, I want to get it lifted up, just lift it up so it won't be, um, that's just another reminder, that that block that's leaning over, want to get it stood up. Um, that's pretty much all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilman George?
I have no comment.
You don't? Okay. Um, well, I just want to thank everybody. I hope you all had a blessed Easter. Um, and thank you all for your hard work. I know we, um, the police and fire were out, um, working, and public works had to respond to some calls, so we thank Clearwater for that. So, um, also, as Councilman College said and Councilman Delott attended, and we appreciate the partnership, um, with the county on our camp out with your recreation department, um, Supervisor Morris, and working with, um, our rec. director, Chastity Bilbo, and y'all's partnership meant a lot. So we look forward to many more of those type events. Do we have an update, or can we post, um, citizens are requesting on the dumpsters out for the cleanup that's coming up? So are we getting ready to post that? Cause they're all starting, um, to ask when.
For the city ones?
For the city, uh-huh.
I haven't posted yet. I'll get on that.
Okay, if we can get that posted, cause I know the hazardous waste day is coming up, and they posted about that, so.
Okay.
If we can get that, I appreciate it. Um, that's all I have. Um, that brings us to our city manager comments. You don't have anything? City clerk, Ms. Montgomery, you have anything? Or our deputy city clerk, do you have anything?
Okay.
Okay. And that brings us to our city attorney comments. Mr. Dennis, do you have anything?
Yes, Mayor. I would ask that we go into closed session, discuss whether executives are appropriate.
Okay. Do we have a motion to go into closed session?
No, I don't want to go into closed session. Alright, I'll make a motion. We go into closed session. Terrible, we gotta go into executive session.
Second.
Okay, we have a.
Second, okay.
Uh, motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman Jackson to go into closed session. Um, all in favor? Councilman George? Councilman Ja- Ann Anderson?
Aye.
All in favor? We already did it. Motion carries. So we're in closed session. If y'all want to step out, and when we're done, the city attorney will come out and tell you, um, what.